Good afternoon, welcome to the September 11th, 2024, Board of County Commissioners Comprehensive Plan Amendment Virtual Workshop. Before I ask the clerk for a roll call, vote, want to read into the record from Commissioner Glenn Myers. Please ensure information regarding my attendance is read into the minutes of the workshop. Due to another commitment, I'll not be available to attend the workshop on Wednesdays, October 11th, 2024. That's from Commissioner Myers. And with that, can we make the roll call?
Good afternoon. Hagan?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Cameron Sepeta? Cohen?
Yeah.
Kemp?
Here.
Miller? Myers is absent. Wostel?
Here.
Thank you.
So under a no action will be taken during the workshop. And at this time, I'll turn it over, I think it's to Ms. Linehart, leading this afternoon's agenda.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for the record. Good afternoon, Melissa Linehart, Planning Commission staff. We have six items this afternoon for your workshop. I'll go ahead and start with item A1 as our fly item for presentation. HTV, if you wouldn't mind bringing up that presentation, that would be great. That's perfect. Thank you so much. Can everyone see that? Great. So this is a privately initiated text amendment, HCCPA 24-06. Next slide, please. Thank you. Again, this is a privately initiated text amendment that applies to one geographical area of the county. It would affect text under objectives 58 and 59 of the future land use element. And this section is the one that covers the energy industrial park future land use category. So specifically, this is a 3,000 acre tract of land to the south of State Road 60. And one of the proposed changes would affect a 475 acre area to the south of the railroad tracks. But the other proposed changes would affect the entire energy industrial park area. And I have some graphics in the subsequent slides that will show you which is going on where. Next slide, please. So this request is part of the January 2024 cycle of plan amendments. The site is located in the urban service area. It is not located within the limits of a community plan. And the site is bordered generally by State Road 60 to the north. We have Dover Road to the west, Turkey Creek Road to the east, and Durant Road to the south. Also, you'll see some cutouts on your screen, the one that's kind of on the southwestern portion of the site. That is the three, I'm sorry, CSX Railroad. And then the cutout that's more on the eastern and southern side closer to Turkey Creek, that is a Tico corridor. Next slide, please. The energy industrial park future land use category, it's a unique category that applies to a select geographical area of unincorporated county, as I mentioned. This category, along with the text that supports the category's vision and contains the requirements for the energy industrial park, that was all created through a privately initiated text amendment back in 2010. The policies were written based upon the topography of the site, as well as the available energy production technology at that time. Next slide, please. Back in 2010, there was a large public outreach effort at that time. And then in 2022, we did see a change to the language as part of a privately initiated text amendment. And that modified the language to allow for one energy producing output, rather than the two that were originally required, so long as the output that's created was doubled to achieve the vision of what was set out by the energy industrial park language. That change was approved and is in effect today. Next slide, please. So this brings us to the impacts of the proposed text change. This is a slide that talks about the existing language. So currently, the adopted language does not allow for any residential use. There's also a requirement that a minimum of 40% of the total land area in the energy industrial park category must be utilized for energy producing uses.
Just make a point of order quickly. I'm hearing from people that they can't, they don't have any audio on YouTube.
Okay, thank you. HTV, did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. The current language also limits the industrial, research, manufacturing, institutional warehousing and distribution facilities to 30% of the overall land area of the site. And then direct access is, is from a major arterial, I'm sorry, direct access from a major arterial is required in the current language. And in this case, that would be State Road 60. Next slide, please. So the proposed language, as privately initiated, that would allow for consideration of residential development in the 475 acres to the south of the existing railroad tracks. And again, I'll show you a graphic on the next slide. It would also allow for direct access to a collector roadway for the proposed residential uses. In this case, that would be Dover Road. It would also decrease the minimum requirement for energy producing uses from 40%, which is currently the requirement, to 25% throughout the entire energy industrial park area. It would allow for industrial, research, manufacturing, institutional warehousing and distribution facilities to exceed the current limit of 30% of the overall land area by increasing it to 50%. And then it would also allow for the consideration of agricultural farm in a garden area within the residential area. Next slide, please. So this slide shows a more detailed view of the energy industrial park site. The crosshatched area on the south side of the railroad tracks that you see there, it's approximately 475 acres in size. This is where the applicant is seeking to place the residential development that's proposed as part of the language changes. And the other changes that I mentioned would affect the entire site beyond this area. So the kind of the dotted pink line that surrounds the entire site, that would affect those areas. So I also wanted to mention that the applicant has asked that the board direct a concurrent rezoning for this item. So if you could provide some direction on that, that would be helpful. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here for any questions.
Yes, I was going to break you up that this request was made and consistent with how we've handled requests in the past of if this can, if this CPA can run concurrently with the PD modification. And there's going to be another one like that, too, I believe, at the end of today's agenda. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Wostel?
Yes, I'm sorry, there's like a weird lag of you speaking over yourself. And I think it's just catching up. Am I coming through clear?
Yes. I can hear you fine.
Okay. I was just going to say, well, first, as far as the PD thing, real, really, unless there's a reason that's in our policies, I don't, I don't see why we have, this has to be requested each time. It should just be an option if they want to do it. I've been watching Commissioner White say that he prefers them for concurrency for the past eight years, I think, maybe seven years on these things. And it seems to be more transparent to the general public if, if they want to be heard together, that they could be heard together without us needing to be involved. But I just want to chime in quickly on the energy industrial park. There's obviously been a lot of conversations about it. I didn't know much about it in 2010. I think I pointed out, I was in Afghanistan, so I certainly didn't have anything to do with it being rezoned then. I dug real deep, EPC also dug real deep with me on these sites. And there's some actual very interesting information. I've met with opponents to this that are in the community. I've heard their concerns. But the EPA themselves have their own super fund redevelopment program that's celebrating 25 years this year. And many of those uses, I was very surprised, especially with all of the conversations and worries that this was going to be some type of toxic introduction to anybody that's visiting those locations. Many of the uses are parks that children play on, are permanent uses of past super fund sites, shopping centers, athletic fields that children are getting tackled on, maybe sliding in the dirt on, residences, just to name a few. So I wanted to make sure that since this has already gone through some huge rezone, is this site, if it goes forward, it's already zoned for many uses, do they have to go through that EPA super fund redevelopment program and meet their standards? Since the EPA is who manages super fund redevelopments, can, can anybody speak to that?
Hi, Commissioner. I can say that as part of this process, we do send out agency review summaries. So the agencies are all transmitted these items. And I did specifically, because I wanted to understand this a little bit more, especially given the residential component, I did reach out to EPC as well as the DEP with the state. And all of those comments are available on our website and will also be part of your packet when this comes to you for the public hearing. But essentially, how it was described to me is there are tools in place, there are processes in place. But at this point, because we're just talking from a comp plan amendment stage and we're very high level, that the development standards will actually come through at the rezoning stage and then at the site development stage. I know Adam Gormley is on this call. If he has anything to add, he's welcome to it.
Commissioner, is it?
Sorry.
No, I was just, because the question is, is the super fund, they have a super fund redevelopment program. This is a super fund site. Can we confirm that they have to go to the EPA's redevelopment program?
Commissioner, I don't, I can't confirm that that from the EPA side, let's say, the area where the residential is being requested is distinct from the super fund site. So there are two different sites. The residential portion, yeah, the super fund site has its own parcel, its own folio. It is a good bit north of this area proposed for the residential use.
Okay, I guess what I would say is, I know that this board would not do something that would compromise public safety. And I was very surprised, and I will send it to anybody that's interested. It's from the EPA's website. It clearly lists they redevelop, they have their own program. They actually put housing, children's playgrounds and parks, and they fully redevelop these super fund sites. And I'm grateful for the EPC doing that work and anything that anybody wants from the EPA side, I'm happy to share. So I just wanted to make that point for anybody that's hearing any worries. Seems like there's clear standards in place that this could be done in a very safe way if it's, if it's approved. So thank you very much, Commissioner.
Commissioner, this is Stephanie Wickham. I'm the Waste Director at EPC. And I just wanted, hi, I just wanted to add in there that the area where the housing is proposed south of the railroad tracks, that is not where the super fund site restrictions are. That's further north. So.
Okay, so even, maybe even easier then, and less of a worry. Thank you.
I thank you. I don't see anyone else in the queue. So if there were any questions or comments, next item.
Yes, sir. Next up, we have item A2, which will be presented by Ms. Alexis Myers.
Thank you, Melissa. Can I have HTV present the presentation for me? Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff, here to present HCCPA 2426, located at 6625 County Road 579. Next slide, please. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is small in scale and approximately 38.29 acres. The applicant is proposing to change the future land use category from residential two to, I'm sorry, to residential two, to light industrial planned. Next slide, please. Here's the general location map. The site is in the rural area and within the limits of the Tenochtitlan Community Plan. Next slide, please. Here we have the aerial. The site is outlined in pink, and the blue line indicates the urban service area boundary. The subject site is north of West Print Road, south of Davis Pool Road, and east of County Road 579. There is agricultural and single family uses currently on the site. Agricultural is also to the east and north, while single family uses extends to the west, north and south. Next slide, please. Currently, the future land use designation is residential two. Other future land use categories shown in this map include residential one and residential four to the west, north and south, and then agricultural rural to the east. Next slide, please. Again, the applicant is requesting to change the future land use category to light industrial planned. Next slide, please. Next are the impacts. As far as existing conditions, currently under RES 2, the site could consider 77 dwelling units or 87,120 square feet of non-residential uses. Under the proposed future land use designation of light industrial planned, no residential is allowed except limited accessory residential, for example, an onsite security guard. The site could consider 1,250,934 square feet of non-residential uses. The proposed amendment will result in the increase of non-residential uses, the elimination of residential uses, and introduce industrial uses. Next slide, please. And before I end my presentation, the applicant did submit a rezoning PD 241135 that they would like to run concurrent with this CPA. And this concludes my presentation for HCCPA 2426.
Thank you. Commissioner Wostel? Do you want to speak to this item?
Oh, I think that's leftover. There you go.
Don't see anyone else in the queue. So next item.
Very quickly, Chair, if you don't mind, the, if we, if we just mentioned that an applicant wishes to have a concurrent rezoning, is that acceptable? Or do you all need to discuss that? Because A2, they did ask that.
Yeah, I think that's acceptable. I share.
Okay.
I was thinking the exact same thing Commissioner Wostel was. And I think for efficiency, for transparency, for more information, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up for us. I really appreciate it. Okay, that brings us to item A3, which will be presented by Mr. Tyreek Royal. Thank you.
Thank you. HTV, would you mind bringing this up for me, please? Perfect. Good afternoon, Tyreek Royal, Planning Commission staff. And today I'll be presenting HCCPA 24-27 at 12410 Tenochtitlan Road. Next slide, please. This request is privately initiated, small scale map amendment with approximately 39.3 acres. The request is to change the land use designation of the parcel from agricultural rural 1.5 to residential 1. Next slide, please. The location of the subject site is in the northeastern portion of unincorporated Hillsborough County. It's a part of the July 2024 cycle, located in the rural area within the limits of the Tenochtitlan Community Plan. Next slide, please. This is an aerial of the site outlined here in pink. It's located north of Tenochtitlan Road, south of Stone Lake Ranch Boulevard, west of McIntosh Road, and east of Campbell Oak Drive. Surrounding uses include agricultural to the north, west and east, with single family uses to the south and southeast. Directly to the south are mobile home parks. And I'll bring you to the next slide. The site is in AR 1.5 future land use category. It allows for the consideration of farms, ranches, feedlots, residential use, rural scale neighborhood, commercial, offices, industrial uses that are related to agricultural and mining related activities. Commercial uses are subject to locational criteria. And the parcel to the west of the subject site is currently designated residential 1. Surrounding the land use designations include agricultural 1.5 and north to the north and west, and residential 1 to the east and south. Next slide, please. This brings us to the proposed. The applicant is requesting to change the future land use category from agricultural rural 1.5 to residential 1. Residential 1 category is intended for rural scale densities and intensities, and multipurpose projects must meet locational criteria. AR 1.5 allows for the consideration of the same uses as residential 1. However, industrial uses are removed. The floor area ratio lessens the allowable area from 40,000 square feet to 30,000 square feet, or 0.25 FAR, whatever is less intense. Again, the parcel to the west of the subject site is designated as residential 1. Commercial uses are still subject to locational criteria. Next slide, please. This brings us to the impacts. Currently under AR 1.5 designation, the site can be considered for up to seven dwelling units and approximately 427,977 square feet in non-residential uses. The change to residential 1 would allow for consideration of up to 39 dwelling units with the same square foot of non-residential uses. Commercial uses are capped at 30,000 square feet. And the proposed amendment will increase the potential residential density. Next slide, please. As a reminder, this applicant emailed the Board of County Commissioners to request that this application run concurrent with PD 241040. And that concludes my briefing on this presentation. I'm here for any questions.
Okay, thank you. I don't see anyone in the queue. So we can go to the next item.
Okay, sir. And just given what you said about A2, we'll assume that one is concurrent because it was requested. Thank you for letting us know. Item A4 will be presented by Ms. Alexis Myers. Thank you.
Thank you again, Melissa. Can I have HTV present the presentation? Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Alexis Myers, again, here to present HCCPA 2428, located at 18116 Boyet Road. Next slide, please. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is small in scale and approximately 24.93 acres. The applicant is requesting to amend the future land use category from residential two to residential four. Next slide, please. Here is the general location map. The site is in the urban service area and located within the limits of the South Shore Area Wide Systems Community Plan. Next slide, please. Here is the aerial. The site is outlined in pink, and the blue line indicates the urban service area boundary. The subject site is west of Boyet Road and south of Dorman Road. Agricultural is currently on the site and is also further east past Boyet Road. There are single family uses to the east, west and north. And the subject site is, also has wetlands, significant wildlife, and is in the FEMA flood zone A. Next slide, please. Currently, the future land use designation of the site is residential two. Other future land use categories shown in this map include residential plan two, which is within the urban service area, as well as residential one and agricultural rural, which are in the rural area. Next slide, please. Again, the applicant is requesting to change the future land use designation to residential four. Next slide, please. Next are the impacts. As far as existing conditions, currently under RES 2, the site could consider 50 dwelling units or 87,120 square feet of non-residential uses. Under the proposed future land use designation of RES 4, the site can consider 100 dwelling units or 174,240 square feet of non-residential uses. The proposed amendment will result in the increase of density and intensity. Next slide, please. And before I conclude the presentation, the applicant also has a rezoning of 240707 that they would like to run concurrent with the CPA. And this concludes my presentation for HCCPA 2428. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I don't see anyone in the queue.
Okay, great. That brings us to item A5, which will be presented by Mr. Tyreek Royal.
Thank you, Melissa. HTV, would you mind bringing that up for me again, please? Perfect. Good afternoon again, Commissioners. Tyreek Royal, with your planning commission staff. And today I'll be presenting HCCPA 24-29 at 6911 Gibson Drive. Next slide. This request is privately initiated, small scale map amendment with approximately 1.18 acres. The request is to change the future land use designation of the parcel from residential six, suburban mixed use six. Next slide, please. The location of the site is in the southwestern portion of unincorporated Hillsborough County. It is a part of the July 2024 cycle, located in the urban service area within the limits of the Gibson community plan. The site is located within a coastal high hazard area with a FEMA floodplain zone of AE. Next slide, please. This is an aerial of the photo site outlined here in pink. It's located north of Nundy Avenue, south of Gibson Drive, west of Gloria Street, and east of US Highway 41 South. The surrounding uses include heavy commercial to the west, single family uses to the east and north, across Gibson Drive. Next slide, please. The site is in the residential six future land use designation, which allows for the consideration of residential, suburban scale neighborhood, commercial, office uses, multipurpose projects, and mixed use development. Commercial uses are subject to commercial location criteria. Surrounding land uses designations include agricultural rural 1.5 to the north and west, residential 1 to the east and south. And I'll bring you to the next slide, please. To the proposed, the applicant is requesting to change the future land use category from RES 6 to SMU 6. Typical uses within SMU 6 include residential, suburban scale neighborhood, commercial, office uses, research corporate park uses, light industrial, multipurpose, enclosed residential, and/or mixed use projects. Neighborhood commercial uses must meet locational criteria and be a part of a larger mixed use plan development. Office uses are not subject to locational criteria. Next slide, please. Currently, under the residential six designation, the site can be considered for up to seven dwelling units and approximately 12,850 square feet or 0.2 FAR, I'm sorry, 0.25 FAR, whatever is less intense. The change to the SMU 6 would allow for consideration of up to seven dwelling units and 25,700 square feet or 0.25 FAR, whatever is less intense. The proposed amendment will offer the same residential density, but greater commercial intensity. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see that this concludes my briefing. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone in the queue. So we can go to the next item. And I'm aware of a similar request for the companion rezoning to travel with this one. So go ahead and.
Yes, we were contacted about that. Thank you. Item A6 is, will be presented by Mr. David Hay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. David Hay. HTV, if you could pull up my presentation, please. Thank you. Hopefully you can all see it. Your last item on this agenda is HCCPA 24-30. It's at 7,002 Nundy Avenue. It's actually just to the southwest of the site that we just saw. Next slide, please. This is a privately initiated small scale amendment. It's approximately 10.89 acres. Currently, the subject site has a designation of residential six, and the applicant is looking to go to that suburban mixed use six future land use category. Next slide, please. Here we have a general locator map. As you can see, it is just to the southwest of that last plan amendment site, 24-29. It is located within the urban service area. It falls within the boundaries of the Gibson community plan and also the South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan. And it is located within the coastal high hazard area. Next slide, please. Here we have an aerial of the subject site. You can see it's outlined in yellow. On the north, we have Gibson Drive. On the south side, we have Nundy Avenue. Just along the western border, boundary, it runs along that CSX Railroad right of way that goes down to Manatee County. You could see Gibson, you could see portions of Gibson Drive. And most of what you see on US 41, there are some non-residential uses, heavy commercial type uses along segments of those roadways. There's also a light industrial, heavy commercial use directly to the south of the site on Nundy Road. The little notch area that's located in the northwest corner, that is a Hillsborough County retention pond. Next slide, please. Here we have the adopted future land use map. Currently, the site, as you can see in yellow, and all the surrounding parcels are designated that residential six. There is some suburban mixed use six to the east along Gibson Drive. That's that light pink color. There's also some suburban mixed use six up along the Ala Faya River on the north side of Gibson. The bright red, which somehow didn't make it into my legend, but the bright red is the office commercial 20, future land use category. And then that light green on the west side of Gibson is that residential one category. A lot of that is just environmental lands. Next slide, please. You can see if this is approved, the subject site would go to that light pink color representing the suburban mixed use six. representing the suburban mixed-use six future land use category. Next slide, please. So currently, this, the, uh, the, the subject site under the residential six can be considered for up to sixty-five dwelling units or a maximum of a hundred and eighteen thousand, uh, square feet of non-residential uses. Under the suburban mixed-use six, the potential, uh, residential units would remain the same. Non-residential square footage, uh, would increase to approximately, uh, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand square feet as a maximum. And under that suburban mixed-use six future land use category, commercial-intensive and light industrial, uh, uses could be considered and introduced to that site. Next slide, please. That concludes my presentation. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right, I don't see any questions from comments, board members, so.
I have one.
Commissioner Kemp?
Sorry. Um, I was just trying to get this up here. Sorry. Um, I wanted to ask about, um, this plan. So forty-one goes right through where they keep having it on the tip and then putting it off right through where they're supposed to do an, or planned off and on to do an overpass, um, so to accommodate CSX tracks. Because they have had terrible backups on forty-one due to the fact that, that, that CSX crosses those or sits on those. And sometimes, and I've been caught in it before, where it's ten or fifteen minutes. And there, and, I mean, it's been years, uh, on the tip and then, uh, put out. So I just wondered if there is any coordination, uh, with regards to putting this on the tip and making this a priority? If now this is, uh, to be, um, rezoned or, uh, different future land use?
Commissioner, can I ask a clarifying question? Are you referencing up, uh, it's on the north, along forty-one, just south of Causeway Boulevard? Are you, is that the overpass that you're, when the railroad, you know how the railroad tracks come from?
Right, yes, yes, that's it. And I was trying to kind of locate it here. But even if it's not in this area, this area will be tremendously affected by it because it affects all of forty-one from South County right to downtown because it is a huge barrier. And, and improvements haven't been done on forty-one. But I think this, I think it is one of, um, our, uh, great bottlenecks that hasn't been dealt with. And I find it really frustrating because I think that, um, the way that forty-one could develop and be used, um, it's, it's a real constraint on that.
Well, um, Commissioner, we do coordinate with our partners here at the TPO. And, um, we are, this is still under review. So we will make sure that your comments are shared with our, uh, TPO partners. And we'll, we'll see if we can at least address your, uh, concern somehow at the hearing.
Yeah, because we, we moved up other things on the tip list that weren't even things that people were asking for or don't, um, aren't problems. South County is backed up like crazy, and we're hearing all kinds. I mean, we have people crying, begging, um, and forty-one is a problem. So, um, for us to, um, I just think it should be a priority at the TPO, um, to do something about that. And I'm, I'm not really aware of the status because it keeps changing. It's gotten pushed off. It had this date or that date. You know, I just think it's incredibly significant to South County and in particular to forty-one.
Do not note it, Commissioner. We'll, we'll make sure we address your concern.
Thank you.
Okay. See if anyone else in the queue. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.